Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WACA. The town of Ashland, in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, is currently following the guidance from the Ashland Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, all public meetings to be conducted remotely. To participate remotely from a computer, please use the link that's listed in the agenda, or you may use the telephone number and call in. That number is also listed on the agenda. First item of business is to call the meeting to order. I, John Trefethan, am present.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, I'm present.
Hi, Stuart Segal, I'm present.
Hi, Anton Kamirov, I'm present.
Excellent. First order of business this evening is going to be a continued public hearing on the special permit request for eighty-nine dash ninety-three Quarterville Road. It's continued from the July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two hearing. I will read the meeting notice. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing. It started on Tuesday, July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven P. M. To hear the petition of Clara Bell Ramirez requesting a special permit per Chapter forty-eight, Section ten of the Massachusetts zoning act and Chapter two-eighty-two, Section three-point-three, parenthesis, non-conforming uses and structures, close parenthesis, and nine-point-three, parenthesis, special permits, close parenthesis, of the Ashland bylaws to allow for a change of use from a commercial garage to a construction business. The property in question is located at eighty-nine Quarterville Road, Assessors Map eight, Lot zero-zero-nine, and is within the residential A zoning district. The public hearing opened on July twelfth, continued on July twenty-sixth, and a motion was made to, at that time, to continue it to tonight's meeting. Sitting on the matter at the start of the hearing were members Brian Forrestall, Nathan Band, and myself, John Trefethan. Unfortunately, Nathan was not able to be here tonight, so that our, one of our associate members will step in, in his absence. I believe Stuart Segal was present at both the July twelfth and the July twenty-six hearings, participated in those hearings, and will step in tonight and act as the third member on this decision. Stuart, could you just confirm for the record that you were in attendance on July twelfth and July twenty-sixth at the two previous hearing dates?
I was, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Thank you. At the conclusion of the hearing on July twenty-sixth, Nathan, Brian, and myself, as well as Stuart, discussed the matter, and we came to a conclusion that we thought we could support the special permit request with certain conditions, and we asked our assistant town planner, Emma Snellings, to draft a decision consistent with our discussion. She did that and distributed a draft decision last week. At this point, unless there are any further questions that we wish to address, I believe we are ripe to enter into deliberations. So would someone like to make a motion to enter into deliberations?
So moved.
And is there a second?
I second that motion.
I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Segal, vote in favor.
I, Anton Kamirov, vote in.
Okay. Um, okay, we have the draft decision, as I said, which Emma sent out. One thing, actually, Emma, did you receive any replies from anyone requesting changes or additions to the draft decision?
Uh, no, I did not receive any edits. And if you'd like me to share it on screen, please let me know.
Okay, um, the one change I had, and this was pointed out to me by someone else, is that in the sitting members of the, who was going to be the sitting members voting, for some reason, my name was not listed. So unless you know something that I don't know, I think we need to change that because it's going to be me, it's going to be Brian, it's going to be Stuart. Anton was not present at the last meeting, and he's not a voting member for the decision. So we need to make those changes at the bottom of the the bottom of the decision. And in addition, it it occurred to me that where Nathan was a sitting member the last time when we had the discussion about what we what our thoughts were on the matter, I think it would be helpful to have Nathan's name listed in that. I'm looking at page two, under facts and evidence, in the third paragraph. I think we could insert Nathan's name there as opposed to Stuart's. And then perhaps at the bottom of that of the fourth paragraph in that facts and evidence section, we could list note that Stuart has substituted Mr. Band as the voting member on this decision. And that way, there's sort of a better accurate record. If somebody looks at this ten years from now, as we had to do with the two thousand and thirteen decision from the ZBA previously, there's a little better record as far as who was present and who discussed what. Brian and Stu, are you okay with those proposed changes?
I'm okay with them.
Yes.
Okay. And Emma, you, you have sort of what I'm, okay, excellent. Well, with that being said, I think we are prepared to to vote. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor of granting the special permit.
Can someone make a motion first?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. I'm getting ahead of myself. Brian, do you want to make a motion? You're our motion man.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the special permit as amended.
Okay. And Stuart?
I second that motion.
Okay. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor of granting the special permit.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Segal, vote in favor of granting the special permit.
Excellent. Okay, we are all we are all set. Emma, when do you think you would have the decision with the slighted amendments we had there available for us to sign at the Town Hall?
I can have it available tomorrow. The Town Hall will be open until seven P. M.
Excellent. Thank you very, very much. Ms. Ramirez, I see you there, and congratulations. We have voted to approve the special permit. We have to sign the decision. It will then be filed with the town clerk's office. There is a twenty-day waiting period in the event, in the event that anyone wants to appeal the decision. And if not, the decision will be ready for you to file it with the Registry of Deeds and proceed with the approved use. Okay?
Yes, thank you to everybody. Thank you, all the partners and all the neighbors. Thank you. We greatly appreciate it.
You're very welcome. The neighbors were most helpful in the whole process, and good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing on a special permit request at three ninety-nine Union Street. I will read the notice of the public meeting, and we would then proceed from there. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven P. M. via a Zoom video conference to hear the petition of Retail Ashland LLC requesting a special permit for Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, of the Massachusetts zoning act and Chapter two-eighty-two, Section three-point-one, parenthesis, principal uses, close parenthesis, and nine-point-three, parenthesis, special permits, close parenthesis, of the Ashland bylaws to allow for the construction of a fast-food drive-through Starbucks restaurant. The property in question is located at three ninety-nine Union Street, Assessors Map twenty, Lot zero-zero-nine, and is within the industrial zoning district. For those members of the general public that are watching, the way we will proceed is the applicant applicant's representative will make their position known, what they're requesting, and why, why the board should grant it. The board members will have an opportunity to ask questions. The man will then be open for public comment, so that any member of the public who wishes to ask a question through the board chair or to comment on the project will have that opportunity, and we will proceed from there. Before we start, I think sitting on the hearing at this point would be Brian Forrestall and myself, John Trefethan. Again, with our third member absent this evening, one of our associate members has to step up. I know typically what we do is we rotate hearings, so that all of the, each of our associate members gets an equal opportunity to to participate and act as a voting member. It would be Anton's turn, I believe, at this point. Anton, will you be present, do you think, for the next, this meeting, obviously, but probably the next meeting as well, because we'll have to come back?
Yes, I tend to be.
And would you be willing to step in and act as a voting member on this matter?
Yes.
And Stu, is that okay with you?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay. Having covered all those little niceties, why don't we turn it over? And I'm going to guess that Attorney Efrand is the representative who's going to be making the pitch for the applicant this evening. If I am wrong, please correct me, but please go ahead. Identify yourself, and I know this is not your first rodeo here, so the forearm is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Efrand. I am an attorney with offices in Ashland, less than two hundred yards from the site of this particular project. And thus, I'm intimately familiar with the site, with the current use of the site as a Brooks Pharmacy, with the surrounding development, and exactly what has happened since I've occupied my office in nineteen eighty-four. The property address here is three ninety-nine Union Street. It is currently used for a Walgreens pharmacy. What we are proposing is a redevelopment of the property for use as a Starbucks restaurant with a draw through. If approved and constructed, this will be the first such Starbucks restaurant in Ashland. With me tonight and who will speak and assist in the presentation are the property owner, Greg Salvatore, owner and manager of Retail Ashland LLC, Scott Rogers, a civil engineer from J.K. Holgren Engineering in Brockton. They have done all of the civil engineering, the design work, prepared the site plan, studied the drainage, proposed the stormwater analysis, and did everything else that a civil engineer should do. Also with us tonight is Emily Buck from McMahon Associates. They are tropic engineers. They did a comprehensive tropic study, which has been submitted to this board, and they paid particular attention to the queuing requirements of one of the bylaw provisions that is at play here. And she will speak and address the details of her report. Prior to filing the petitions before you, the applicant and members of our team met with all town boards, including the assistant town manager as a representative of the selectmen, and various department heads and representatives to gather input. That meeting occurred late winter, and as a result of that meeting, whatever concerns came to fore were attempted to be incorporated into design. The design that you see in front of me tonight and has filed had a number of iterations to it, a number of comments, not only within but from others, and also had to be approved by Starbucks internally, which is their want. I have filed, in addition to the exhibits that you have here, a narrative. And the purpose of the narrative was kind of just to really summarize in text form the requested relief and why we believe in your discretion, you'll be able to find that the criteria for the permit, special permits, have been achieved. There's two special permits that are required here under the zoning bylaw. One for a fast-food restaurant. A restaurant is allowed as a matter of right in the industrial zone, but a fast-food restaurant requires a special permit. The second is a drive-through. You may ask, why are we looking for a drive-through special permit? There was already a drive-through there, and we're not moving it. We're requesting a drive-through special permit because at the time of the original approval of the Brooks Pharmacy, which is the predecessor to Walgreens on this site, there was no special permit requirement under the drive-through bylaw. And although a drive-through use was permitted as of right, the bylaw provisions were somewhat different. I made a determination, having, as you put it, gone to other rodeos and dealt with this particular relief, that it made sense for the community to have this project tested, to ensure that we absolutely satisfied the criteria to ensure a safe and consistent operation of the site as to access and egress, particularly to avoid spillage of, to avoid spillage of cars on the surrounding streets of Summer Street and Union Street. By way of overview, the existing history in the site does go back to nineteen ninety-nine, when Greg still owned the site. In that particular case, there was an approval of the Brooks Pharmacy. The structure that is on there now is the exact structure that was established for Brooks. It's approximately ninety-seven hundred and fifty-four square feet. It contains free access and egress ways, two from Union Street and one from Summer Street. They are proposed to be retained in their present function and sizing without alteration. There's also a drive-through that has been in use for the entire duration of the property for the use of the drugstore. Again, it is not moving here. The plans for the redevelopment have significant benefits. Some of them are really from the actual scope of the project. We intend to demolish the existing building, and it's going to be replaced by a much smaller building, approximately twenty-five hundred and seventy-five square feet. That's about seventy percent smaller in terms of the building surface. Besides the obvious aesthetics, the benefits that are going to be achieved by the smaller size are dramatic, and they're important. Number one, there'll be less impervious surface, more green space. There'll be enhanced landscaping. There'll be much more room for the parking of cars and still allow for pedestrian and vehicular movement within the site. The current use for Brooks required a variance from this board for signage and a special permit because for parking, because the amount of parking that was required was simply not able to be met under the bylaw. Here, we're well within the parking requirements of the bylaw, and we don't need to have more signs than are necessary under the bylaw. In addition, it's going to be a safer site. The reduction in the building will allow for significantly more maneuverability, and there'll be more room around the building to move cars in and out, and so they'll be able to, quote, "find their way" without interference. That has not always the case, as this board knows, with all of the drive-through facilities in Ashland. In addition, there'll be a newly designed drainage and stormwater system. There'll be upgraded lighting, all of which will be dark side compliant. The restaurant, as proposed, will be for both indoor and outdoor dining. There'll be an encouragement of pedestrian access. That pedestrian access is incredibly important relative to the location of this site because of the absolute proximity to both Stone Park and Kids' Park. There will be, that will be an enhancement for the, for the amenities offered to this community in the right spot. Turning particularly to the requested relief, the special permit is required on the fast-food use. If the board allows this, the board, the restaurant use is allowed as a matter of right. It is the fast-food use which requires a special permit. The location here is consistent with other like uses in the neighborhood. Immediately adjacent, going northwest, is the K Plaza. They have three restaurants in there, two of which are fast food. Across the way, in the, in the Middlesex Savings Bank, there are two restaurants. Directly north of that, there are already two fast-food facilities. So in terms of the harmony to the existing neighborhood, I would submit to you that the proposed fast-food restaurant use, particularly in the manner in which it will be conducted by Starbucks, will be harmonious with the existing neighborhood. The second special permit is the drive-through special permit, and you'll hear details about the queuing, the amount of space for cars, and when, when the engineering representatives speak. The bylaw, as I indicated now, has special requirements for queuing and special requirements for a fast-food restaurant. As will be shown by the later portions of the presentation, we easily meet and exceed those requirements. That is important because it allows us to stay, stay with confidence that we'll operate the site safely. We hope after hearing the evidence, you will use your discretion to consider granting the relief. The criteria that are required will be met. It will meet community needs. The traffic flow and safety goals will be met. There will be no service drain on existing utilities or infrastructure. It'll be harmonious with the neighborhood. There'll be environmental upgrades. And for fiscal impact, there'll be more jobs, a higher evaluation, without any kind of concomitant drain on services. I should point out to this board that no matter what this board does, if it grants the relief, we're not done. We have filed an application with site plan review, which is triggered by this particular project. That application is pending before the planning board with the first hearing on the twenty-fifth of this month. In addition, we will be making a filing with the Conservation Commission. We had a preliminary meeting with them at the end of July to go over some procedural requirements. We'll be filing a notice of intent because there is work proposed within the buffer zone, and envision they will have to review the stormwater permit. So that would, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, be my initial pitch, if you will. And with that in mind, I would turn it over for a brief opening remarks by Greg Salvatore, the site owner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and other board members and members of the community that might be listening in or watching. My name is Greg Salvatore. I am the ownership group of this property. We purchased this property twenty-two years ago. Some of you may remember it was a Boston Edison switching station, basically, that was not in the greatest of shape at the time. We were successful at that time in getting a pharmacy to come in and take over the property. They built the building there, and they were successful. Brooks was initially, originally then purchased Rite Aid and then Rite Aid by Walgreens. About a year ago, Walgreens let us know that they would not be renewing the lease, and their lease ends in February of two thousand and twenty-three. So we then began to seek out alternatives. We looked at a variety of different uses, whether it would be a multi-tenanted site. We've had a long history with Starbucks. We currently own five of them, five of the properties. We don't own the Starbucks because they're not franchises. They're all company stores. That's how they kind of keep things very tight in terms of how they operate. We found Starbucks that was, they have recognized that the town of Ashland has grown quite a bit. This would not have been a site for them probably ten years ago. So Ashland has definitely grown. They have seen that. They would love to be in the community. We've put a great plan together that, as Neil touched on, and Scott Rogers will go over, and Emily will go over the, the way the site works. It's a huge improvement. So with that, I will hand that back to Neil, or are we going to go to Scott?
Scott, our engineer, Scott Rogers, please.
Can you hear me, y'all?
Yes, Scott.
Thank you, Greg. For the record, my name is Scott Rogers from J.K. Holgren Engineering. As was discussed, so the site is an existing pharmacy. Generally, the site topography slopes in an easterly direction. There are three existing curb cuts, which will remain intact. As far as the existing parking, there are forty existing parking spaces, and that includes three ADA spaces. The current building has all the utilities. Existing utilities are in place. Some of those will be used, and others will be improved upon. As far as the new use, as obviously was mentioned, it is a coffee shop with a drive-through. The building itself is twenty-five hundred and seventy-five square feet. We are proposing a total of forty-two parking spaces, and that includes four ADA, ADA spaces, excuse me. It also includes mobile order spaces and employee parking spaces as well. So the drive-through for the Starbucks is typically in So the drive-through for the Starbucks, uh, is typically in the back here. Basically, as far as the stacking, and Emily will get into more detail about, you know, traffic and all that, but generally speaking, um, the parking itself is only required to have nineteen parking spaces, just as a side note there. But as far as the stacking, uh, you can have twelve cars, which essentially gets you to the island that is the internal island that is closest to the Union Street, uh, western entrance.
Scott, do you like me to share the plan on screen?
Yes, please, I'm sorry, yeah.
Give me two seconds.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, do you know which page, um, you would like me to show?
Sheet C three.
Oh, no. Sorry, one second. There we go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yes, so there, there are twelve, uh, car starting, excuse me, car stacking spaces, which gets you basically to the island at this area right here, at the Union Street, uh, western side there. And then you would add maybe five or six additional cars that would get you out to this particular island over here. So for a restaurant or a bank or any drive-through, really, that's a lot of stacking for, for this particular use. Um, as you can imagine, with seventeen or eighteen cars, you know, obviously we want to have as many cars on-site as possible to be, you know, increasing sales, but after that amount of cars in a drive-through line, people are not going to wait that long. They're gonna basically park in the parking lot in the store and get their coffee and et cetera. So as I said, we have tons of, uh, stacking on, on-site. There is a bypass lane that joins, uh, next to the drive-through lane itself. So if a car does get, you know, sort of stuck and they're not going to the drive-through to be able to get around the building and not get stuck in a drive-through lane when they don't need to be. As, uh, Jerry mentioned, we are improving pedestrian traffic for the project. We'll be improving the, uh, pedestrian traffic, uh, connections to Union Street to get you to the store. We're also going to improve the pedestrian traffic to Summer Street to get you to the store. And we have looked, uh, you know, between Emily from McMahon, the traffic engineer, and ourselves, we looked at, you know, site distance for the curb cuts. We looked at, um, the visibility, and we actually had some conversations with the town engineer, and we did make some improvements to, uh, trimming back some of the vegetation to improve those, uh, site triangles, if you will. There are some additional amenities on-site that we're proposing. You know, ADA parking with ramps. The outdoor dining facility there, we're also proposing bike racks. This, uh, if you can flip to sheet C four, Emily. Thank you. Uh, grading basically will remain pretty much intact. There's not any major cuts or fills involved with the redevelopment of this project. Um, the existing underground infiltration system, which is a large system on the, the, uh, western side of the site, the main parking lot, that'll remain intact. Uh, there won't be any changes to that. Um, this site would be considered a redevelopment under the mass stormwater, uh, guidelines. And basically, a couple of things are going on here with that. We are decreasing runoff to that existing stormwater underground system I mentioned to you that's located in the parking lot here. But we are also adding more green space to the site, as Jerry had mentioned. Uh, quite a significant amount of additional landscaping and green space. But we're also adding some, um, LID, some low-impact development to the site. We are putting in, if you can flip to, um, C four. Yeah, in this area right here, the, uh, northeastern corner of the lot, we are proposing a fire retention area. Uh, the, the, you know, the building footprint is pretty small. That footprint will be, um, basically handled with underground piping and will discharge into that fire retention area. That fire retention area has been sized appropriately to handle the, all the storms that we analyze, which would be the two-year storm, the ten-year storm, the twenty-five-year and the hundred-year storm. And that particular fire retention area does handle the hundred-year storm for, for that watershed. Uh, the other thing additionally I want to mention about stormwater is that we are decreasing the peak runoff rates and the peak runoff volumes for the site. So of course, that is an improvement to the overall site development. On, uh, sheet C five, we will be, uh, improving telephone, electric and data services to the building. There's an existing gas line there, we'll be extending that. Of course, if the, the gas company determines that we need to upgrade that line, we'll obviously do that as well. And we'll be extending the existing water line into the building. Right now, it's a two-inch, uh, water line service. As far as, uh, sewer, we are going to be adding an internal grease trap inside the restaurant. Then outside the restaurant, ten feet, um, in a southerly direction, you can see it over here, we'll be adding a new sewer manhole. And there'll be a six-inch sewer line that'll basically connect to, uh, an existing stub that was, uh, put in by the pharmacy tenant. Uh, if you can shoot over to sheet C six for me, please. So we did look at, and we are, uh, improving the site as far as during construction, uh, adding erosion control measures. We are going to be adding a silt sock, which will help prevent erosion and sedimentation. And we'll be, uh, putting in silt sacks, which is essentially inlet filter fabric, if you will, which will help protect the existing catch basins from getting runoff, sediment, trash, all that. So it'll protect the existing drainage system that's underground in that front area, as mentioning before. That'll help protect that from being inundated with materials that we don't want to go in there. So the, the ability to leach is still maintained and intact. And we'll also be adding in a stabilized construction exit. Some people call it entrance, but basically that allows the trucks leaving the site to get rid of all the dust, sediment, dirt, if you will, before it leaves the, uh, site and goes onto Summer Street. And then, uh, as far as landscape development, you know, we will be putting in obviously new green space. We'll be putting in some new landscaped islands, which will have, uh, new sod, also some new shrubs. And we are proposing some new shade trees as well as street trees on the property. And there'll be new foundation plantings proposed around the actual restaurant along the front, you know, entranceway along the back, around the drive-through area, and then also some plantings around the outdoor dining area as well. As far as the existing landscaping, we're proposing to basically improve what's there now. We'll be doing trimming on, you know, shrubbery and trees that need trimming. We'll also be doing fertilizing for the trees and shrubs, uh, fertilizing for the lawn areas, putting in new mulch, uh, and making that existing green space, which is mostly the, you know, the area at the intersection here, improving what's there and making it look better and more, uh, you know, more attractive. Generally, what I would call, uh, a general cleanup for that particular area. And then as far as lighting goes, we are, uh, proposing to use the new, uh, a couple of new lights on-site. One will be, uh, an area where we are putting in that new island over here by Summer Street. So we'll be doing, doing a new light pole there and also a new light pole over at the parking area, uh, the main parking area in front of the Starbucks restaurant. And those new lights will be LED lights as well. So I guess at this point, I'd like to turn over to Emily Buck from McMahon and Associates, who will discuss more about the traffic.
Uh, sure, thank you. Um, my name is Emily Buck. I'm from McMahon Associates, and we completed the, uh, traffic study for the development. And actually, Emma, would you mind just resharing that? I might just reference some things, make it a little easier.
Yes, I also have the queuing plan up.
Um, I think just C one, sheet C one should be fine. Uh, sorry. That one right there, perfect. Um, um, so as part of our study, we analyzed the three existing site driveways, which as mentioned are not proposed to change as part of the development. Uh, we also analyzed the signalized intersection of, um, Union Street at Summer Street, and then the unsignalized intersections of Summer Street at Cherry Street, and then also the Ashland Plaza driveway on Union Street. Here, actually, that's between two of the site driveways. Uh, we collected turning movement counts at the study area intersections from six AM to nine AM and from four PM to six PM on Wednesday, June first of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and these timeframes reflect when the traffic volumes on the adjacent roadways and also accessing the site would be, uh, the greatest. Um, the traffic volumes were then projected to future year twenty, uh, twenty-nine, and traffic that would, uh, estimated to be generated by the development was, um, uh, distributed to the site driveways in the study area intersections. Uh, we analyzed the speed year conditions with, um, with the traffic associated with the development and also, um, without it, so that we could evaluate the impacts. Uh, if any, that would be, um, a result of the development at these intersections. Um, based on our analysis, it would not have a significant impact on the operations of these, uh, intersection. This showed that these intersections have the capacity to accommodate traffic related to the development. Uh, our analysis also shows that the site driveways are anticipated to operate sensibly during both the morning and afternoon peak periods, and that the queuing at the site driveways, uh, would not interfere with the internal site circulation. Um, as mentioned, there, based on some discussions with the town, there were some concerns with the available sightlines along Union Street. And during our field review, we observed that those were largely due to the vegetation. Um, those concerns were due to the vegetation on the, um, east side of the site by the driveway, right about here. Um, so someone from our project team, from the project team went to the site and cleared those as they were on the property. And then, um, we evaluated the sightlines and they were measured to exceed, uh, the standards, um, set by, um, the American Association State Highway and Transportation officials. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, uh, as I indicated, we, this is Mr. Effron again. Uh, in addition to the oral testimony that you've heard, you have in the package the full range of the exhibits, which is the entirety of the traffic report, uh, the entire site plan consisting of multiple sheets, floor and elevation plans of the proposed restaurant to the extent, uh, you want to look at them, an existing photograph of the Walgreens Pharmacy, and an existing photograph of a typical Starbucks restaurant. And I would suggest to you that, um, we're available and can handle and want to address any concerns. Uh, the project owner takes this incredibly seriously, as do I, as far as the going through the permitting process, making sure there's complete and total disclosure, and making sure that we adequately respond to any concerns. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would invite, um, uh, you to, uh, I guess, conduct whatever inquiries you and other board members want to make.
Certainly, thank you, Attorney Effron and everyone else who, uh, participated in the presentation. Um, Brian, why don't we start with you? If you have any questions for any of the, uh, any of the participants or presenters, I guess I should call them.
Um, thanks for a great presentation. I, I don't have any questions. It's pretty clear that this, um, should work well, um, according to your plan.
Um, okay. Um, Anton, any, any questions?
I don't have a lot, just, um, I guess it looks like you guys are increasing the number of ADA spaces.
That is correct.
Yeah, I don't have anything else, honestly, this is great presentation.
Okay, yes, thank you. It is certainly one that, um, has been very well organized, and we would expect nothing less from Attorney Effron and his clients. So, uh, that is always helpful. Um, hey, I just have a, a couple of questions just to sort of clarify things. Um, the, there, there are two present cutouts on, on Union Street. There's one, I guess, on the east, easterly side, which sort of leads directly into where the, uh, the drive-through is. And then there's another one, I guess, closer to the westerly side or the Summer Street, uh, intersection. And from the directional arrows, it looks like there's a, an ingress going from Union Street into the property on the east side, but on the, the westerly cutout, there's only an arrow going out. So does that mean cars are not going to be going into that second westerly, um, entrance?
Right. Yeah, I would defer to Emily on that question, just because it's a traffic-related question there.
Yeah, so the one closest to the signalized intersection will be a right turn out-only driveway, similar to how it operates today.
Okay.
That, that, Mr. Chairman, that particular access egress point is fairly close to the island that is in the road where the road splits.
Right.
Never been a left turn allowed into there. Uh, the reason for that is you're on an incline going downward. It'd be a tough left turn. It's never been used, and we don't propose to change that.
Okay, but you, but he.
It's always been a right turn only.
And is that still going to be a, a right turn only? Because it does, from the markings, it doesn't look like there's any entrance allowed in there on that spot from coming either from the west or coming from the east. I guess I'm, I'm just trying to get my, myself situated on that.
It would just be a right turn, um, for vehicles exiting the site just because of the angle of the driveway.
Okay. And I guess, uh, coming on Union Street and heading west, and as you turn into, into the property, how many spaces in the drive-through, or how many cars can go straight in? Because on the, on the map I'm looking at, which I guess is C one, and it's not a map, it's a, it's a drawing, it appears as though there are a number of rectangular vehicle spaces, um, going to the left as you come into the property, as opposed to the, the queue line as well. So I guess, what, what's a car supposed to do if it comes, goes into the property? And there's a car, the car's queuing in the, the takeout, go sort of around, around the bend there. What, what is the car, where does the car go? What does it do? It can't get directly into the takeout line because there are too many cars ahead of it. So where, where is it designed to go?
So there are, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, there are approximately seven cars that get you to, uh, the, the menu board, if you will. So that's stacking for there. If someone did enter from that particular entrance that you're talking about, they would be, they would drive around the back. There is a bypass lane, so there is about twenty-two feet. So there's plenty of room for a car to, you know, go around the drive.
Run and come back and get one, okay.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Um, I don't have any further questions. Stu, do you have questions on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have several. Um, on a topic that we haven't talked about, how are deliveries made to the building?
So those deliveries will be made from probably the Summer Street entrance, and there'll be room there for, you know, it's probably smaller trucks that'll be delivering, uh, materials to the store. As you can imagine, with a coffee shop slash restaurant, that's not, uh, the amount of deliveries are relatively small, and they're not, you know, they're more compact cars than, or trucks than you would expect from a, you know, a Shaw's or a Stop &amp; Shop type of it, you know what I mean? So it's a, a smaller vehicle, if you will.
So those deliveries would park in a regular parking spot? And then they, the operator would, would deliver them with a hand truck to the building?
Uh, not in a regular parking space, but in, in the area in the parking lot, more towards the intersection. Uh, as I mentioned to you before, there's, um, forty-two parking spaces on the site, and there's only nineteen. Uh, forty-two parking spaces on the site and there's only nineteen required, so we feel like we have. Tons, I shouldn't say tons, but we have plenty of parking available and there's plenty of room for, you know, tr- truck deliveries to happen as well, so.
Can someone point on the map exactly where you're speaking to?
So we anticipate that the truck deliveries will be down in this area right here.
You can't see what you're talking about, Scott, unless you can circle it or something like Emily did.
Can you see my mouse?
Uh, kind of.
No, that's my mouse. Um, Scott, when you hover over it, um, can you see an option to annotate?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay, I can mark it up, but start from the beginning.
Yeah, basically, um. There's the main parking lot nearest the store. And then the, the second parking area, if you will, heading towards the intersection down below that. So we're anticipating that the deliveries are in that particular area, in the lower area, if you will, on the more western side.
Thank you.
Okay, my, my second battery of questions. Um, Mr. Effron, you said you had some input from town officials. Had the police department made any comments? With regard to traffic?
They didn't make any at that, at the one meeting that uh they were, they had a representative there and that I was at. Um, other than that they wanted to make sure because of the amount of the schoolchildren that would be there. That we pay heed to the fact that we would, we would uh be utilizing pedestrian, the pedestrian access that's currently there. I have noticed uh during the brief time I've been back in Massachusetts over the summer. That there was some work done out there to re-highlight uh that intersection in terms of the painting. I think it's now clearly marked and as a result, I think that they'll be um able to have safe. Uh, pedestrian access to and from the site, at least from the, at least from the western area. Um, that was really the only comment. There was no other particularized comment that indicated that. Uh, it was inappropriate for this particular project because of any concerns of the police department or fire department for that matter.
Okay, so getting to the fire department, can the fire trucks make a complete access to the building? With their equipment?
Yes, there's a fire, there's a, one of the sheets, I believe, Scott, shows the turning radius for the fire truck. Is that correct?
That's correct. In the package is a uh fire truck turning plan, sheet C three A. Which shows the ability for the uh, the fire truck to make all appropriate turning movements inside the site and exiting and entering.
Okay, my last question is with regard to the entrance and exit at the. Easterly uh location on uh Union Street. Um, I'm concerned about the. Cars that might venture. To make a left turn and continue down Union Street. Um, during high traffic hours, um, because you have people exiting. These, I'll call it the CVS Morrow um. Location across the street and you have naturally traffic backed up because everybody's going to the train. Wanting to get to work, that's gonna be like a, a kamikaze run across the street there. So I'm just concerned about it and I would appreciate some input from the traffic engineer or anyone else that. Uh, might view that as a particular dangerous um venture.
So I can jump in here and give um some input. So we did include that um CBS driveway that you mentioned, the Ashland Plaza. As part of our traffic analysis, so it's included in our traffic model, um, and we were able to in, kind of analyze that with. The additional traffic from the development as part of our future year analysis. And based on our analysis, the driveways would still operate acceptably um. Even with the development uh and the, the offset intersection across the street. Um, from that CBS driveway, uh and then um the sightlines at driveway are also acceptable, so they would be able to see. Um, people coming out of the CBS driveway as well as the traffic coming from, through the traffic signal as well.
But you're not concerned about cars exiting out and going easterly on Union Street during high traffic volumes?
Um, there's, based on our traffic analysis, they would, they would be able to take a left turn from there, um, similar to how it operates today. That operates as a full access driveway, um, and people are able to, to make that left turn to travel east.
Thank you.
Okay, um, before we. Go to public comment, um. Brian or Anton, any further questions?
I'm good.
Good as well, seems clear to me.
Okay, as am I, so we will open the hearing for public comments. If any. Member of the public wishes to be heard, um, please either raise your hand on the screen or. Hit the raise hand button on the uh bottom of your um. Computer screen to let Emma know that you wish to be heard and she will um invite you into the meeting. Emma, I, I see one, one hand that's being raised. We have.
Just quickly, before we get to Mr. De Sone, I wanted to share that I did receive a phone call from a, a neighbor. Um, I was, I left my notes about the phone call at the office and I've not been in the last few days, so I will be distributing that to the board and the applicant. Uh, my, my notes on that phone call, um, as soon as I get back in the office. Um, um, but she did share uh some concern about the stormwater and the traffic flow on the site. So again. More details I will send as soon as possible, but I just want to let you know I did hear from one uh resident about the project.
Okay, so there will be some further public comment in addition to what we hear um this evening. Okay, um, that being said, and thank you for letting us know that, um. I see one hand being raised. Are there any other members of the public that wish to be heard? I'll say, Emma, then if, if not, would you allow Mr. De Sone into the meeting?
Yes, Mr. De Sone, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Mark De Sone, forty-nine Hawthorne Road. And first I'd like to say, even Mr. Heffron.
Hello, Mark. Good to see you.
Yep, the mayor's back in town.
Not really.
I know.
That's you, that's you, Mark. Absolutely.
Okay, um, I, I would like to understand, I'm a current. Um, customer with the uh Walgreens Rite Aid. When was this first announced? Saying that Rite Aid, Walgreens is being sold in the place in Starbucks coming, when was that first announced?
Mark, I'm gonna stop you there because that doesn't really address what we're here, what we're here to address. That's a business decision. And perhaps contact the head of Starbucks or more appropriately, the head of Walgreens to find out.
Okay, so I'll tell you, I, I will take that back. I, and I, like I said, I'm a regular customer there, so I'm gonna just frame it in that sense, but I know the parking lot. And I know the entrance and exit and everything. And I'm agreeing with Stu about that uh second exit that is only gonna be a right turn. And a, and not a left turn, but that is a dangerous corner there. And um I know that the unloading, loading and bringing in um. Material to the store, the parking lot itself, they usually what, what Walgreens has. Is that what they uh parked in the front to take out the lower area by the corner. So that's gonna probably be the same thing. So, um. Once this, if it does get a special permanent passes. What, yes, I'll ask this, what, I got the next steps once the per, special permit is passed. What's gonna be happening after? That's my question. Thank you.
Um, Mark, as um Attorney Effron mentioned. Um, they have a matter before the planning board with a hearing, I believe, later this month. Uh, seeking a site plan review. And there is also a conservation commission uh matter that will be determined by the conservation commission. Um, is that, did I recall everything correctly, Attorney Effron?
You did.
Okay.
Okay, so that, okay, this would be it, this would be it, the, the last couple sentences. So this is, is this like the first step before them, right?
Well, it's one of three things that the applicant needs to, to do and. Obviously, if the board uh were to deny a special permit for a fast food restaurant and a drive-through. And there probably would not be much sense in going forward with a site plan review before the planning board because. They wouldn't be able to have a drive-through or a fast food restaurant, so. Um, typically, when something like this comes before us, the applicant. Files and goes before the zoning board of appeals first.
Okay, so what I hear do is, I always do, is just wait for the other two. Boards to hear this and get more information from there.
Yeah, I believe Attorney Effron said the planning board hearing is scheduled for later this month, so.
Okay, so I'll wait for the planning board. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, any further public comment? Um, okay, um, typically at this point, I would ask for a motion to. Uh, close the public comment, but I won't do that uh because we will be awaiting the uh. The information from Emma with respect to the phone call that she, that she received. Um, with that being said. Uh, typically, we would perhaps start discussion about what our initial thoughts on this matter are. Uh, and ask Emma to draft a decision, uh, but I'm a little hesitant to do that before we. Uh. Entertain the uh public, additional public comment. I don't want it to appear that we've. Decided something before we hear the uh individual's concerns. What do people think about that? Brian, Anton, thoughts?
Emma, could you tell us again what their concerns were, as you remember them?
Yes, um, so I do have more detailed notes in the office. Unfortunately, I've been out for a few days. My apologies. Um, but um she lives on Summer Street and she had concerns about uh the stormwater management. Plan, um, and also just traffic flow on the site. Um, I asked her to come to the meeting, but um. She wasn't able to and um I also offered to show her the plans in person. Uh, on hard copy, but I have not met with her.
Well, the stormwater plan would be before the conservation commission and not, not before us uh. In any event, and traffic obviously is part of our. Part of our concern. Do you know, with having thought about it some more, um. We don't vote formally on a, on a matter at this, at this stage. We, we sort of give our thoughts. And ask Emma to draft a decision consistent with those, with those thoughts, and we could certainly do that. Uh, then hear the uh public applicants, uh the public's concern and. We could change our, our thoughts after hearing that, so um. It just seems to me that I, it doesn't to me to be a reason to postpone it the more I think about it and given. Uh, comments that all three of us have made during the course of the matter, it seems to me that um. The applicant has met its, its burden and that we're, we're in favor of granting a special permit for fast food as well as for drive-through. Have I read you, Brian, and you, Anton, correctly on that?
I'm satisfied with the presentation uh as far as traffic and stormwater um from this team. Uh, despite Mr. De Sone and Mr. Stewart's. Concerns about exiting out of that exit that's been there, um, you know, it's existing, that they're, they're not really changing it. They're just adding parking and making the building small. I, I'm confident that this team has all the bases covered and I'm in favor of this.
Okay, Anton?
Oh, so sorry, my dog decided that was the time to make a statement. Um, I, I, I agree, this really.
Was that a yay or a nay?
Uh, he agrees, uh, and he's gone now. Um, I, I, I would just say that it, it really looks like, in general, it's a, it's a use that, i- it's a structure, I guess, that's, that's. Better than the existing one and the conditions seem to be beneficial in general, so I would definitely be in favor.
Okay, um. I just saw a raised hand from someone named Linda and we haven't. Closed public comment, so I think we can entertain her comment. Um, Emma, if you would um. Allow her into the meeting.
Yep, Linda, you can uh unmute.
Hello, um, I am the existing manager at Walgreens.
If you could just identify yourself, please.
My name is Linda Di Tomaso.
Thank you.
I just, I am, like, I know that the Walgreens will be disappearing. However, I have seen what's gone over. The last nineteen years as far as the traffic on Union Street and it does concern me because. We have lost lives there. So I just propose that Starbucks puts some kind of traffic light in there. Or some kind of a way that. When the traffic goes out and the traffic comes in, that we don't. I, I mean, two years ago, we lost a live and it was a really good. A really wonderful uh Ashland resident. And it was because he was exiting the CBS parking lot and taking a. Right-hand turn out and somebody coming down the road on our side of the road hit him and he died. He was, so, um, and, and there was time between the time he exited that parking lot. And the time he was hit and that we had video of it and it was horrific. So I agree with the whole traffic. Problem that that's going to present if we don't put some other kind of. Traffic light or something that prohibits people from going left and people going right at the same time. Um, that's gonna have to be something that's addressed because I've seen too many people in nineteen years either get. Hit, maybe didn't die, but uh pedestrians just crossing the road and being in danger. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention and also being the uh, the manager of the property for nineteen years. There is a lot of flood problems there. Um, one October, we had. I, and I'm sure that when, once they knocked the existing building down, there won't be a basement, but we had water. Pouring into the basement from the uh, because we're on a water table and we couldn't stop it. Because the, the drainage part of the parking lot would get filled up with leaves and everything else. And it would just create this huge lake in the parking lot, which would only come into the building. And we've had several uh cases of that over the past nineteen years. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention just because I know about it, um, but the, the. The actual Union Street uh traffic thing is not, not a problem. It's a problem. It's a problem right now and it will be a more existing problem if you have more cars coming in and out of that parking lot. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention, um, because I've seen it.
Okay, well, thank you for your, for your input. Um, the applicant does have to go before the conservation commission. To deal with issues concerning. Water and wetlands and things of that nature, and I'm sure the conservation commission will, will address those issues. And your comments about the uh traffic concerns are, are noted. Okay. Emma, do you have enough to um draft a decision for us? Whoops, Anton, yes.
I think you just might have another hand.
Oh, okay, um, yes, uh, Jess H. coming late to the game, but it's still in part, in time for public comment. So if you would, Jess?
Hi, I'm Jessica Hudson. I currently work at that Walgreens and I am very concerned about the traffic, especially just with. A Starbucks opening is the first one in town. Everyone's gonna be going. It's the first one in town. Everyone's going to be going there. So I guess my main concern is like, is there?
Dunkin' Donuts would not be happy to hear that, but that's all right.
What is it? Oh, yes. I don't know. I'm just very worried about the traffic being backed up, affecting like residents there, especially when the Starbucks first opens, if it does, and like the police station and access.
Well, I understood. Okay, thank you for that. I think, just guessing, but I'm sure it would not be the first time that when a Starbucks opened, that it had a police detail outside to address traffic for the first day or so as everybody lines up to get their mocha latte or whatever is a possibility. And Attorney Heffron, I have one question for you. You mentioned it was within, the location is within 200 yards of your office. Will you be walking or will you be using the drive-through?
We'll be walking so long as I'm able to walk, sir.
Okay, very good. Emma, do you have enough to draft a decision to get out to us? We'll have some time to further consider the traffic situation. We're not going to close the hearing tonight. We're not going to close public comment tonight. And we may have some further questions at our, at our next meeting to bring, if that's okay.
Yes, I will draft a decision based on the discussion tonight. We'll have it ready.
And Brian and Anton, all set with that? And if so, we need a motion to continue to the hearing to our next date, which is August 23rd.
Make a motion. We continue the hearing to August 23rd.
Second half motion.
All in favor? Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Anton de Camaravote.
Very good. Hearing is continued until August 23rd at 7:00 PM, and it will be the first item on our agenda that evening as it is a continued hearing.
Thank you very much for your attention and your courtesy tonight.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate your attention and your cooperation.
Thank you.
And thank you to the members of the public who provided a good public comment on the, on the concerns. Okay, next item on the agenda would be approval of our minutes from our last meeting, which was July 26th. Emma, once again, sent those out, a draft set last week. Emma, did you receive any corrections or proposed changes from anyone?
I did not.
Okay. Brian and Stu, any changes or proposed corrections?
Not for me.
I had no changes.
Okay, they were fine with me. It was a good job, Emma. Much appreciated. Motion to approve the July 26, 2022 minutes as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
And Anton will abstain as he was not in attendance. Okay, next item on the agenda, as I try and find my agenda.
Updates and administrative matters.
Updates and administrative matters. I don't know why I can't remember that because it's the same every meeting.
I don't mean updates. I apologize, John. You asked me at the last meeting to put Zoom versus in-person meetings on the agenda, and I neglected to, but I will get that on the next one so we can have a discussion about it.
Well, let me ask you that. Why wouldn't that qualify as an administrative matter?
I do agree. I think it is an administrative matter. We could discuss it tonight.
Obviously, the, as Emma noted in her email last week, the Commonwealth has extended to next spring the ability to, for town organizations like ours to meet via Zoom. We could also go back to in-person meetings. Sense of the board as far as what their, what their preference would be at this point in time. Brian?
I prefer the Zoom meetings, and I think it's much easier to view the materials that the planners are presenting to us than handing around paper and so on.
Stuart, your thoughts?
I agree with Brian.
And Anton?
I agree. I think it makes it easier for everyone.
And that makes it nothing concerned. I think if we presented with a, with a matter that for some reason seems particularly complicated or that we need to be meeting in person, we can always do that as long as the public meeting notice and the agenda specifies that. But I think the meeting via Zoom seems to have worked out quite well with everybody having good Wi-Fi connections and an ability to continue on. So that's it. Okay. Then if there's nothing further, we won't ask Emma to talk anymore. And I think I heard a motion to continue the hearing until August 23rd at 7:00 PM. I think Brian did make that motion just now. I can read lips. And is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Anton de Camaravote.
Thank you very much. Emma, I hope you feel better. Good night, everybody, and WACA.
Better.